Yes.
Mr. Parentano?
Yes.
Mr. Cirillo?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Motion passes. Thank you. I'd like to make an executive session statement. The board met an executive session in a virtual meeting on Tuesday, March 24th, 2020, to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, matters related to litigation, and matters related to school safety and security. I would also like to announce that the board met an executive session on Thursday, March 26th, 2020, to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, matters related to litigation, and matters related to school safety and security. Our district mission statement: "In the Shammany community builds futures by empowering each child to become a productive citizen and a lifelong learner." Mrs. Burns, do we have any announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Mr. Jones, superintendent's report, please.
Good evening. I have a statement I'd like to provide tonight instead of the typical report. I want to thank our school community as we move through these uncharted waters related to the COVID-19 concerns facing our nation and the world. Here locally, the school districts across Buck County have worked cooperatively from the onset of the concern to support one another as we make tough decisions and move temporarily toward a new way of providing an educational program. Here at the Shammany, first and foremost, our thinking has been the families of the school community, our students and their families, and our staff and their families. We recognize that in these times of uncertainty, we're being asked to juggle many new developments in our personal lives, new work expectations for some, the loss of work and income, new restrictions on families being able to be together, and children at home around the clock asking serious questions about something that we as adults are desperately trying to learn more about on a daily basis. We have new terms that have become the center of our lives, social distancing and flattening the curve. These terms are used regularly now. We understand what a vital role success in accomplishing both social distancing and the success in flattening the curve will mean to lives all over this nation. Amidst all of this, we've been working to provide for the continuity of the educational experience for our students. Administrators and educators have fashioned our learning opportunities for all grades from K to 12. These have been rolled out in two phases. Phase one was live last week, and phase two became active this week. Our teachers will now be working on collaborative teams in subjects, areas across grade levels, in the elementary grades, and in teams connected to courses at the secondary level. These teams will prepare for phase three of online instruction, which will include formal teaching and learning that will involve instruction on new concepts and skills aligned with the grade level standards. But again, our primary focus and concern is for everyone's well-being. Our nurses and counselors are available. We'll be reaching out to those who we identify to be in need of support. Please do not hesitate to call your child's building principal if we can be of any assistance in any way. Another effort that the district has undertaken is the feeding of breakfasts and lunches for students enrolled in the federal free and reduced lunch program, or who may newly qualify due to recent changes of employment status of a parent. This program currently has a pickup location at Sandberg and Pecessen, and will expand to include all six elementary schools, adding Buck, Miller, Hoover, and Towanka next week. All of the programs will change next week to a Monday, Wednesday, Friday delivery, and the meals for multiple days will be picked up on each of those days. So Monday, two days' worth of meals, Wednesday, two days' worth of meals, and Friday, three days' worth of meals. We will begin this Friday with Saturday and Sunday meals as well available for our students. Another important effort over the course of disclosure has been to get Chromebooks into the hands of our students who are in need. Over 500 students were able to have this technology met, and we're now in a second wave of soliciting and fulfilling more of the tech needs of our students. I thank the many individuals who've been involved in our work, helping to stabilize an uncertain situation and provide direction forward. I thank our custodians who've been at the front line, assuring that our buildings are clean. I thank our maintenance workers who helped make our facilities safer. Thanks, too, are extended to Aramark and our Shammany cafeteria workers for helping to establish our new food program and working to improve the number of students that we can reach through the implementation of ongoing modifications. Also, our technology department has played a critical role in meeting the students' needs and assuring that we have the technology backbone ready for the increased needs of participating with online learning. Currently, the state of Pennsylvania has closed all schools across the state for students up until April 9th. Given that that's the back end of our spring break week, we have targeted Monday, April 13th for a return to school. That said, any number of people would question whether we will actually be ready to open at that time. If we are extended any further, the Shammany Phase Three for our continuation of instructional activities will commence. Our program will be robust, and our teachers will be ready to engage students in meaningful new learning. Either way, April 13th is the target for all of that. Finally, let me thank the district cabinet administrators who've led the charge to accomplish all of the above. We meet daily and support one another. Each has played and continues to play an important role in our overall success. I also would like to thank the board for the support of our employees and our children during these very trying times. Each member of the board continues to work with the best interest of all in mind. Together, we are stronger. As in the Shammany School Community, we are ready to continue to confront this challenge, and I thank everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Before we proceed to public comment, Mr. Jones, were we able to finish our YouTube conference, or did YouTube discontinue it for us?
YouTube discontinued for us.
Alright, so YouTube kicked us off. So we apologize to any of those residents, taxpayers, and anyone else that logged on that was expecting to see us on YouTube, but unfortunately, there was some type of policy issue that they discontinued our service. We're going to try and correct that.
Mr. Parentano, we have 48 participants, including the board members and the administrators that are here. So our room is pretty close to what it typically might be on a regular board night. And at the public comment time, if people had an interest, if they go to their participant tab, if they find that, one way of identifying that is by, there's a raised hand icon that they can click on. If they choose to do it that way, we can call on them, and if that doesn't work, once we've exhausted any hands that we see, people can just unmute themselves and let us know if they're finding trouble finding the raised hand symbol.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. So we will move on to 3.05, public comment. I ask those that want to comment to restrict your comments to three minutes. State your name, the area that you live in, your occupation. Please no personal tax. And because each person's connection is going to be different, please take your time when you speak and try and speak as clearly as possible. And please, if you could, spell your last name for the secretary so we can keep an accurate minutes. Thank you.
So I'm going to say that right now, there are no raised hands. If anyone's having trouble indicating an interest in speaking, you're welcome to unmute yourself and say hello, or otherwise, we may have no public comment at this time, Mr. Parentano.
We'll give it a few more seconds to make sure everybody has an opportunity. Okay, hearing and seeing none, we will move on to routine matters.
I think Mr. Rotis was raising his-
He did. Mr. Rotis raised his hands?
Are you saying that out of jest and out of history, or did you actually see a raised hand?
I did see a raised hand, yes.
Well, that makes perfect sense. Go ahead.
He's not unmuted.
Yeah.
He needs to unmute himself.
Steve Rotis, I don't see the raised hand. I don't know if this was just reflex on the part of Mr. Tarente.
He's physically raising his hand on the screen, Joe.
There you are.
There you go.
Okay, thank you very much. I just wanted to say to the board, I think that this way of communicating is fantastic. It takes a little while to get used to it. It takes a little while to figure out how Zoom works if you don't have the proper numbers. But if you hook up to the email, or however you got the notice of it, it's usually highlighted that you can join that way. I think that the new programming is going to be fantastic for the children. I really endorse this wholeheartedly because I was concerned that those really who need continuation of their services and their education would not get it, because I've never been a fan of the cyber charter schools, for obvious reasons. But so I give you a lot of credit in what you're doing, and if I don't get back in the future, I'd like to thank Mr. Jones for his service to the district, and I hope everything goes well for him. So thank you, and I got to go off to another meeting now. So I'll see you later.
Thank you, Mr. Rotis.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, do you see any more hands raised?
I never saw any hands. I didn't ever saw Mr. Rotis's hands raised, but no, there are no mechanical hands. Oh, wait a minute, there is one here. Mr. or Ms. Crater. I don't have a full memory there.
Good evening, guys. My name's Steve Crater. I live in the Quincy Hollow area of Middletown. My question is, being new to all of us, what's going on as far as online learning? I've been having my daughter, who's sitting next to me, me and my wife have been having her do some of the online courses that appear to be optional, but I'm wondering as far as credited courses, courses that actually matter per se, test taken, what's going on with that? Do we know? This is my first one of these. Don't really know what else to say, but I am curious about that.
Mr. Crater, we're not going to answer questions directly right now. We're going to wait to the end of the meeting, and then Mr. Jones will address the concerns that you put forward. If you have, you know, any other questions, we're going to have a second public comment period before the meeting ends, where you can add some more commentary now, and then Mr. Jones will address those types of questions.
No, that's perfectly fine. Like I said, I've never done this before, so yeah, we'll do that.
That's great. We much appreciate your participation. Thank you. Mr. Jones, do you see anyone else?
No, you're free to move on. Thank you, Mr. Parentano.
We're good?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to move on to section 4.0, routine matters. I'm going to ask for a master motion for 4.01 minutes, 4.02 treasurer's report, 4.03 check register and procurement card purchases, 4.04 budget transfers, 4.05 bids, 4.06 investments, and 4.07 exonerations. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Kovitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marington?
Yes.
Mr. Parentano?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Cirillo?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Motion passes nine to zero. Thank you. Section 5.0 personnel certificate, Mr. Sullivan, please.
I'd like to pull out section 5.06 co-curricular appointments. I'd like to make a master motion to approve item 5.01, retirements, resignations, end of assignments, 5.02 leaves of absence, 5.03 revised return some leave, 5.04 appointments, 5.05 co-curricular resignations.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. There's been a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bowman. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Kovitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marington? Mr. Parentano?
Yes.
Mr. Cirillo?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Nine, zero.
Motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Sullivan?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 5.06 co-curricular appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. There's been a motion. May I hear a second?
Second.
I can't under, who said that?
Second.
Mr. Kovitz? Mr. Kovitz with a second? We have a second. Any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman?
No.
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Kovitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marington?
Yes.
Mr. Parentano?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Cirillo?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no.
Motion passes eight yes, one no. We're going to move on to section 6.0. Mrs. Hollenbeck, please.
All right, hold on a minute. I'm reading six, right?
You're reading, you're going to pull out the last one, I believe, and you're going to read six, one through six.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 6.01 leave of absence, 6.02 revised leave of absence, 6.03 retirement, resignations, end of assignments, 6.04 appointments. That's it.
Okay, we have a motion. May I have a second?
Okay.
Second by Mr. Allen. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. This is a roll call. I'm sorry.
Did we get an answer? Is there an answer for the question I posed earlier?
Don, I'm sorry. I don't have an answer for you.
I made the, Ms. Kovitz advise that the person went back to their position, their previous position.
Okay, Don, thank you.
Thank you very much, Don. Where were we? We had a second. And you have comments and questions answered. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Kovitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marington?
Yes.
Mr. Parentano?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Cirillo?
Yes.
Nine, zero.
Motion passes nine to zero. Mrs. Hollenbeck?
I'd like to make a motion for 6.05 co-curricular appointment.
We have a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman?
No.
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Kovitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marington?
Yes.
Mr. Parentano?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Cirillo?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no.
Motion passes eight yes, one no. Brings us to, excuse me, section 7.0, educational development. Mrs. Boyle, would you please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve 7.01 out of district placements.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyle. We have a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Kovitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marington?
Yes.
Mr. Parentano?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Cirillo?
Yes.
Nine, zero.
Motion passes nine to zero. Section 8.0, business operations. Would you please, Mrs. Hollenbeck?
I'd like to make a motion for 8.01 Sunday facility usage. I'm doing 8.02 separately, correct?
Correct. We have a motion. May I have a second? Mr. Allen with a second. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Kovitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marington?
Yes.
Mr. Parentano?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Cirillo?
Yes.
Nine, zero.
Motion passes nine to zero. Mrs. Hollenbeck?
8.02 donation. Whereas the Albert Schweitzer Parent Teacher Organization has offered to donate one two-person swing set and one six-person swing set, including curving for the mulch area, along with two park benches. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Shammany Board of School Directors hereby approve to accept the aforementioned donation from the Albert Schweitzer Parent Teacher Organization.
Thank you, Mrs. Hollenbeck, for that motion. May we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? I would just like to say, on behalf of the board and the district, we want to thank the Albert Schweitzer Parent Teacher Organization. This donation amounts to $13,000 that, once again, our organizations are investing in our children and in our schools, and we want to know it's greatly appreciated. All right, this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Kovitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marington?
Yes.
Mr. Parentano?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Cirillo?
Yes.
Nine, zero.
Motion passes nine, zero. Thank you. This brings us to section 9.0, policy. Would you please, Mrs. Boyle?
I'd like to make a motion to approve 9.01, the second reading of the policy.
Thank you. We have a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Kovitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marington?
Yes.
Mr. Parentano?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Cirillo?
Yes.
Nine, zero.
Motion passes nine to zero. Thank you. This brings us to other board business. Does any other board member have any board business? Hearing none. This will bring us to the second section of public comment. Anyone wishing to participate, Mr. Jones will, once again, call on you. And remember, it's three minutes. State your name, area you live in, and your occupation, and please, if possible, spell your last name for the record. Thank you.
All quiet on the hand front, Mr. Parentano. Again, if anybody's having trouble finding that raised hand symbol and does want to say something, you could just unmute yourself and say hello. I see no one.
You see no one. Okay. Thank you. We're going to close public comment. Before we start board comment, Mr. Jones, you had one question in the first comment period about what's going on in our education delivery. Could you answer the gentleman's question, please?
Yeah, Mr. Crater was asking about, I think it was an elementary student, but it could have been middle school. It really doesn't matter. We have, last week, we were out of school last week, and we had rolled out what we called our Phase One of our learning opportunities. And Mr. Crater referenced the fact that these are activities that are provided for students. They are not being graded. They're good opportunities for them to stay connected with the learning, review, enrichment-type activities. Phase Two rolled out this week, and our focus is on this learning opportunities for these opening two weeks of disclosure. As a matter of fact, that'll roll into next week as well, while our teachers in force, 600-plus teachers, are going to be involved in a whole variety of things so that we build a foundation for what we are calling Phase Three. The following week after next is actually our spring break week. I suspect work will continue, just because I know the nature of who we are here at the Shammany, but it'll be that next Monday. So on the 13th, we're either going to be in a brick-and-mortar buildings, 10 of them here across the district, or we're going to be delivering a very unified, robust, teacher-driven, new instruction program that's going to be tailored to the students in the grade level for the subjects, all of them, that they're signed up and registered for, and we have a plan to finish out the year that way, if need be.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I'd also like to add that to Mr. Crater, or any other parent that has any concerns, to please contact your school principal. If you don't receive a satisfactory response, or you don't understand, please contact our administration, be it either Mrs. Burkholder, who's responsible for K through four, or Dr. McGee, who's responsible for five through 12, and of course, there's always our Director of Administration, Mr. Mayen, and our Superintendent, Mr. Jones. You can find everyone's email on the school district's website. That brings us to board comment. I'm just going to call names since we're, don't sit around. Mr. Allen, do you have any comment?
Yes, I do, Mr. Parentano. I just want to comment, extend my gratitude, my respect, and my praise to the administration, staff, our teachers, who have, I feel, risen to this occasion. This is an extraordinary circumstance, and I think we've really shown our metal of the Shammany community, and I just wanted to extend my personal gratitude for all they've done, and keeping us in the loop, very much so. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Mrs. Bowman, you have any comment?
Sure. I just wanted to thank the administration. I think you guys really kept it together. I wanted to thank all the teachers that got online right away to keep our kids engaged in academic activities. I can speak on behalf of my high schooler. Most of her teachers have been visible online, offering very rigorous activities to keep her busy during the day. So thank you for everyone at the Shammany for all you're doing for our students. I also wanted to thank all the emergency responders and all the healthcare workers that are working through this circumstance. Thank you so much for your time, and I want everyone in the Shammany community to please stay at home. It's the best thing you can do. Limit your exposure to this awful disease, and I hope everybody stays safe and healthy.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Mrs. Boyle, would you like to make any comment?
I'd just like to thank the administration. I'd just like to thank the administration, you know, for orchestrating this new, new technical way of broadcasting to the community. And I would certainly like to, you know, emphasize that everyone should stay at home and, and try to be good, and that we'll all get through this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyle. Excuse me. Mrs. Hollenbeck, would you like to make any comment?
Um, no comments other than what everybody else has already said. So you know, everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Hollenbeck. Mr. Kovitz, would you like to make any comment?
Hey, Mr. Paratano, yeah. My, my favorite quote of all time is by a gentleman named Alvin Toffler. He's an author and a futurist, and he, he said, "The illiterate of the twenty-first century will not be those who cannot read or write, but those who cannot learn, unlearn, and relearn." And I think in light of our current situation, we see lots of evidence of that in our community. And I am very grateful for that. I know we're not the, the richest school district in the county. We're probably middle of the road in comparison to others. And from what I hear from my colleagues, despite that, we are probably one of the most prepared communities. And we have a really strong, we have a really strong citizen base. I appreciate those people who have come to me through Facebook and some of the communities there to bring certain things to my attention, which I was able to bring to administration's attention. And administration's been very responsive to that. So again, grateful to that. I'm grateful for all those who are on the call, the call this evening, who are taking an active part in our community. So thank you very much. That's it.
Sorry, can I ask you a question? I don't know how to raise the hand. I apologize.
We're at the board, board comment section right now, but did you miss it early?
I just wanted to double-check. April thirteenth was a date we target to go physically back to school and do online education.
Mr. Jones, would you address that for the gentleman real quick?
Thank you.
April thirteenth is the date that we will go back physically, as it currently stands.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Mr. Marington?
Yeah, I'd like to also echo what several board members have said, thanking the administration, the teachers, all, all the entire Neshamani community for doing what I think is a pretty darn good job of restoring some sense of normalcy to at a very abnormal times. Also, you know, hope everybody to stay safe.
Thank you, Mr. Marington. Mr. Sullivan?
Mr. Sullivan, you need to be unmuted.
Lower left-hand corner, should they? There you go.
Well, I just had some good comments, which I'm probably not gonna repeat now. But alls I said was, I, I echo what everyone else said, that administration's done a great job, and we all just gotta stick together and do what we're supposed to do. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Sorillo?
Again, echoing the same sentiments. I appreciate everything that the administration and Mr. Jones has done. It's a uncharted territory with all this, and I, I think we have a very good group of people, educators, administration, everything. So gratitude to all the hard work that they've done.
Thank you, Mr. Sorillo. You know, in closing, I, I just wanna join with my other board members. I think our administration has really stepped to a level unseen and unneeded for many, many years. Our teachers and our staff have stepped up. Mrs. Bowman made comments about the community, our healthcare providers, you know, those emergency responders. Everybody is really pulled together. And it's just, you know, terrible that it had to take, you know, an international health crisis for that to happen. But it's, it's really great to see that when people are in need, people come together and wanna do the right thing. I just wanna toot Neshamani's horn just a little bit here. While no district is prepared to deliver, you know, the, the classroom experience in a virtual environment, Neshamani has positioned itself over the last couple of years in our technology department to be able to offer almost every child a device and be able to plan for programs that, that will be able to help sustain the children while they're at home. A lot of that's in due, due to Mr. Jones, programs that expanded that technology. And of course, our IT department that works tirelessly to make sure those devices are always up and ready to work. Again, I wanna thank our entire Neshamani community, and just stay safe, and, you know, stay at home if you can. Best, best device we can get. We're all gonna get through this. Saying that, I'd like to make a motion for adjournment. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does this require a roll call vote, Mr. Tarente?
You can dispense with the roll call on this one.
Dispart with the roll call. All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for joining us.
Thank you.
See you soon. Night, everybody. Good night.
Good night.